So now we're on item number 13. And that's consideration of adoption of Resolution 14-0067 authorizing the city to participate in a feasibility study of community choice aggravation.
Getting aggravated by the aggregation.
I had a discussion with somebody earlier this evening who said that, and for some reason it stuck. And so I will turn it over to Public Works Director Tony Olmos.
Now for something totally different.[33.04][33.04](Laughter).
Thank you for that. You have a smile on your face.
I want to introduce Sona Coffey. She's our environmental progress manager. I'm going to give the staff first presentation.
Yes, thank you, Tony. And good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So I am here to talk about something different and something that I'm actually really very excited to bring to you this evening. We are going to talk about something that would give the city of Manhattan Beach the opportunity to offer renewable energy to the citizens of this city. To do that, the first step in this process would be adopting a resolution that allows us to participate in a feasibility study. So that's what we're going to ask you for this evening. I will briefly explain what community choice aggregation is, go over the two existing community choice programs in California, give you an update on the progress of community choice in the South Bay, highlight some reasons why we might want to do this in Manhattan Beach, and then talk about the feasibility study and the funding for that. And it'll be a brief overview, and then I'll be happy to take your questions. So, community choice aggregation, it's a long name. They're commonly referred to as CCAs or just simply community choice. What this does is community choice allows local governments to procure or develop power on behalf of its citizens. So a community choice entity is formed. That entity purchases the power from the source. The power is delivered by the utility to the customers, to us here. And the resident benefits because the community choice program lays out affordable rates while offering renewable energy as part of the package. The key to these programs are that the local municipality maintains control over the source of the power. The programs are set up to be a partnership between the utility and the city. So all the transmission, the maintenance of the lines, the billing of the customers, all of that remains with the utility. What remains with the city, with the local control, is the source of that power and the generation rates. Since 2002, community choice programs were made available. There are two that are working successfully in California, and they are working across the country. We'll look at the two that are here. Those are in Marin County and Sonoma County. They are working well. They are providing renewable energy that exceeds the state's renewable portfolio standards, and they're doing that at rates that are lower than the state's, than the existing utility. So what we would do here is looking at these as models for our city. If we look at Marin and the program that they're offering, they have a 50% baseline. So that means they offer the same rate, or nearly the same rate, as the existing utility, which is PG&E, but they offer 50% renewable energy as their baseline product. So residents who decide to participate in that program will pay a little bit less for that baseline program. The same goes for Sonoma County. Their baseline program is at 33%, and it's offered at about $5 less than the utility rate. So there, again, you would get the same service, but you have a renewable energy option, and you're paying less for the utility service. Both of these programs have 100% renewable options available, but those options do come at a higher rate. They are seeing that people are signing up for these programs even though you have to pay more, because some people are willing to pay more for energy if they know that it's 100% renewable. There are dozens of other cities in California that are looking to form these programs now. And what I'll do here is give you an update on what's happening in the South Bay. So the South Bay Clean Power Working Group is an ad hoc group made up of citizens from Hermosa, Redondo, Manhattan, Torrance. You are familiar with many of the members on these committees. They are here this evening. I'd like to acknowledge the hard work of the committees. I think you'll be hearing from them tonight. They have been working with other cities in the South Bay to really bring forward what the options and the potential for community choice here is in this region. And just in June of this year, this group helped, this group helped educate a lot of cities on AB 2145. That was legislation that our city council voted to oppose because it would have limited the use of community choice in our local communities. That legislation failed. We can still implement a community choice program now. Several local cities opposed that legislation as well. Here locally, Hermosa Beach and Torrance are taking action on community choice already. They've, they're collecting data from local universities to really look at community choice. Most recently, Hermosa Beach adopted a resolution, which is the same resolution we're asking our council to consider tonight. You will have received a letter from Councilmember De Virgilio today talking about the community choice program. And I know Mayor Pro Tem, then at very end, is here to support the program as well. So to highlight a few reasons of why we would consider doing this in Manhattan Beach. So, community choice, as we mentioned, it's intended to lower the electricity rate to the customer. So that in and of itself might be enough of a reason for people to want to sign up if they know they're going to save money for the same service, if we're getting the same service, but we offer it at a slightly lower rate. The benefit with community choice is that we're doing that by also offering renewable energy as part of the portfolio. And this part is a key, I think, benefit of the program, especially for cities like ours that have goals to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. This is a tool to help local governments meet those goals, because as we're creating more renewable energy on the market or on the grid, we're doing what's called decarbonizing that grid, where we're lowering the carbon footprint of that, lowering the greenhouse gas emissions for our community to help us meet our goals. There are other benefits to the program, you know, building up the clean energy sector, jobs in that sector, maintaining funds locally for that sector. Those are some of the other benefits of the program. But the ones that I think would be key to Manhattan Beach are the lower electricity rates and the increase of renewable energy to the region. But before we do any of that, the first step would be the feasibility study. And so the feasibility study would allow us to join with other cities that want to look at this option and really participate in this pre-development phase. This first phase is not requiring any funding from the city, so that's, I think, an important part to remember. We're not asking or committing any funds for the feasibility study. We are looking to seek grant funding to pay for the cost of the feasibility study. Grant funds are available. They've been awarded to other communities that are looking to plan for feasibility studies for community choice. And so we would hope if we move forward with this tonight that we would follow suit and seek grant funds as well. And so with that, I'll close, just to reiterate that what we're trying to do with this program is provide that option of offering a lower electricity rate and increasing renewable energy use. But the key to doing that is starting with this feasibility study. So we want, we recommend that the city council adopt the resolution for the feasibility study tonight. And if we come back, if this moves forward, we would come back to council with more information on that. Any potential funding or anything like that would come to council for approval. So with that, I'd be happy to take your questions.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Ms. Coffey. First of all, I'll be supporting this resolution, but I have some questions. Who will be doing the feasibility study, and how quickly will it be done?
Right. So feasibility studies, depending on how big the scope of the project is, they could take from about a year to 18 months is what the average timeframe is in the other communities that have done this. The cities that would partner together would form the group that would want to start the feasibility study and put out an RFP to hire a consultant to actually do the assessment.
Okay. Conceptually, could the South Bay COG, if all those cities supported community choice, could they be the vehicle that does the feasibility study?
They, they themselves might not do the feasibility study. They would probably contract out for it. Also, though, the program would, might expand just beyond the South Bay region, because the city of Santa Monica is interested in partnering with our communities to do, and that falls out of the COG's purview.
Okay. You mentioned that there's cost savings also, but also if you want to get 100% renewable, that might be additional money. How much would that be to a rate pair?
Oh, yeah. To the average customer, the programs are ranging between $5 and about $13 more per month, depending on if it's 100% renewable, renewable energy credits, or completely solar. So there's a few different options that people can choose, depending on what kind of program they want.
So the 100% renewable could be something that is relatively minimal cost for residents?
Yeah, exactly.
That's wonderful. Okay. Well, that's all the questions I had. No, thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Lesser.
I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding the timeline, then, in terms of the estimated period that the various cities and the volunteer group would be working together before we'd be in a position to send out an RFP. If I'm reading the staff report correctly, it references December 2014?
So if, that would be if we want to start to form the group and start seeking an RFP. We still need to have a few other cities join on as partners. So far, Hermosa Beach is the only one that's adopted a resolution. You know, Santa Monica is interested, and Torrance is interested. And there's a few others. I know our, our South Bay friends can talk about the other cities that would be interested in participating and maybe have a better idea of the timeline.
Okay. I would be interested in that timeline. And then also, at what point there might be, then, a cost? Obviously, the costs are going to be impacted by how many jurisdictions are willing to join and explore the feasibility. But would that likely be the time when you'd come back unless we wanted to have some sort of progress report at some point?
We could come back with a progress report and update the council on the cities that have joined and initial cost estimate. Looking at the other agencies that have done this, the cost is around $1 million for the full scope feasibility study. The funding that, there's grant funding that's available, so we would see if we can get funding for at least a part of that cost, and then have to share the cost with the members if needed if we don't get a grant.
Well, frankly, that's one of the reasons why I'm asking the question, because I'm aware that there are grant funds out there. And I imagine there are other jurisdictions that are also exploring this, and we want to be, shall we say, up, up near the front of the line to be able to qualify for some of those funds. How do we do that?
Yeah, no, I think that's a great point. So this first step, adopting this resolution, kind of gives staff the authority to start looking for the grant funds, and also can be used to show that the city council supports this initiative. So when we do seek grant funding, we can attach that resolution to show the support of the council. And also, I think, to, something that will help our chances in getting grants, our partnering with the other cities. So we apply as one collective for this region. Grants tend to like it when we have bigger groups partnering together.
Great. Thank you.
Well, first of all, I want to commend the South Bay Clean Power Group for bringing this to our attention, and I will be supporting it as well. The only question I have is, for someone that already has solar panels, and, you know, they get a credit, you know, for when their meters are in reverse, if the rates go down, how would that affect them, and particularly the payback on their solar investments?
Oh, you know, that's a good question. I'm going to punt that question to Joe when he gets up here. He'll know more in detail. I know there's something with distributed generation, maybe, okay, he'll know. I'll have an answer for you.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, I will open it up to public comment.
I liked the logo that was on that slide, the South Bay Clean Power Group. That was really pretty.
Yeah.
Volleyball, power.
I like the way the slide went from one page to another. Just that was.
That was the best part. I agree.
Yeah. I like the way the guys walked down the stairs. No, go ahead.[735.63][735.63](Laughter).
Good evening. My name is Craig Headwalder. I'm speaking as a resident of Manhattan Beach and also, believe it or not, for the Surf Rider Foundation. Because we are taking on, the urgency of dealing with climate change is a major concern for everybody, and it is a concern for the Surf Rider Foundation. We're dealing with sea level rise, acidification of the oceans, and all these things affect what we're deeply involved with. However, as a resident, I think that the community choice aggregation, and I don't want to say aggravation, program is brilliant. I see, we have spoken with this, I've worked with my colleague Joe Galliani, and we've spoken to many different cities, and I have yet to hear one objection or one negative to this strategy. It makes all kinds of sense. It's a win-win-win strategy. We can reduce costs, we can reduce greenhouse gas effects. It just makes sense all the way across the board. And I'm sure my colleagues will fill in some more of the things. I strongly support this. I urge the city council to support this. We should be in the forefront on this. The city has been consistently a leader in environmental intelligence, the way I see it, and I don't think this is anything to stop on now. So I urge you to do it. It makes a lot of sense. Everybody wins on it. I can think of no reason not to support it, so I urge you. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
I'm Diane Wallace. I'm, nice to see you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm really happy to be here. I, I think this is a terrific way to go. We first, my first encounter with this kind of a program was when I was an administrator in a school district here in LA County that became part of a collaborative with other school districts to get water at a lower rate. And I watched our water bills go down significantly when we joined the group. I couldn't quite figure out how the water would come through the same pipes and get to us at a lower cost, but it did. It worked, and I liked it. So we first, this was first presented to me as an option at the Manhattan Beach 2025 event on Saturday, and several months ago, and I was really interested in it from the beginning, and learned about the implementations in Northern California, in Marin and Sonoma. And the more we've thought about it and the more we've worked together, I volunteered, and I'm really pleased that the council is going to consider accepting the possibility of, and proceeding with a feasibility study, which I think is really an important thing for us to do. So thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Good evening. Nanette Bergin, the Mayor Pro Tem of Hermosa Beach. Thank you, I think this is my first time in this chambers, and I thought it was so important to come out and support this. It sounds like this council is on its way to support this as well. I'm very happy to hear that. A lot of what's been already said is what I wanted to say. This city has been one of the leaders on the environment, and we often, in Hermosa Beach, look to you to see what you've done, so that we don't reinvent the wheel, because we know that you are looking at options and that you are doing things right here. And so, for once, we actually got to do the resolution first. So I, I do urge you to adopt this resolution and join in. We will be the first two cities to lead on this, and hopefully many others will follow. And we can set an example here in the South Bay. So thank you very much for having me speak tonight.
Thank you, Nanette.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Staff, Jeff DuClos, Hermosa Beach. I'm happy to be here tonight with you guys to talk about this. I think, I think this proposition is probably one of the best-kept secrets in California in my mind, and I give a lot of credit to Mr. Galliani to really sort of moving it forward here in the South Bay. I think the opportunities are tremendous. I think we are at the forefront of doing this, and I think it's consistent with, with the expectations we have of Manhattan Beach, you know, when I think of Manhattan Beach. I was so happy to see Mike Garcia earlier tonight. Is a perfect example, that kind of leadership that we see not just on the council but within, you know, the residents, I mean, in terms of what he's done, in terms of his plan, his innovating plan that he was presenting tonight, in terms of dealing with open space, and obviously his leadership in terms of environmentally sensitive work, in terms of landscaping and so forth. There, there's a, the benefit is not something that's far afield. It's something that's happening now. This last year, in Marin County alone, their clean energy program netted something like $5.6 million in savings. It's not something that comes out of taxpayer money. It's something that creates benefit and revenue for a city. And I think just speaks volumes about the, and again, I just go back to having the opportunity to sit here tonight and watch the work you guys have been doing in terms of the kind of visioning you're doing in terms of protecting the values of your downtown, and the kind of visioning that you've already done in terms of your commitment to a clean future. I not only expect you guys to participate, I would expect Manhattan Beach would be a leader in this, so it's great to be with you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, esteemed members of staff. It's, my name's Joe Galliani. I'm representing the South Bay 350 Climate Action Group. It's a real honor to be here tonight before you, and I appreciate the opportunity to have you consider this proposal this evening. This wouldn't be happening if this movement didn't start here in Manhattan Beach on March 29th, when we did the MB 2025 Forum. Frankly, I didn't know anything about community choice aggregation before we had Mr. Cordell Stillman come down from the Sonoma organization and speak at that forum that we had. And that was really fortuitous. He spoke a full month before Sonoma County's program rolled out. And so we had the benefit of hearing what their development program was like and what their aspirations were. And now, many months later, they're achieving those aspirations. In fact, they launched it in May. In June, they funded a 30-megawatt, which is rather large, solar farm with funding from this operation. And that gives me the opportunity to address some of the questions about the cost of this, whether it's the feasibility study or beyond just the technical feasibility study. And the really good news about this is that no cost will be borne by the city, even if we didn't get grant money for this. The bottom line is, all development funds, all feasibility studies are all reimbursable from the program itself. And so, in fact, in June, Alameda County and their Board of Supervisors approved more than $1 million to do their feasibility study and a number of other studies, including outreach to cities in their area to see who wants to participate in this. And the reason that the Board of Supervisors there did this so quickly and easily is because all of the funds that they approved will be recoverable and reimbursed from the operation itself. And that's been the case in both Marin and Sonoma. So when Craig talks about the fact that we've heard very little pushback from this program, I think it's because it appeals to both environmentalists in terms of the renewable power, because this generates additional renewable power. When I mentioned that 30-megawatt solar farm, that would not have come online or been financed if not for the Sonoma operation. Marin is doing the same thing. In fact, Marin just got terrific cooperation from Chevron up in the Richmond area, and Chevron is donating land for more solar panels to be put on another solar farm, and they're leasing it to Richmond for $1 a year. And that's because it's brownfield land that can't be built on. It's toxic wasteland. So we believe that we have the support for this. We know we have it from Hermosa. Torrance is waiting to hear the results of their USC Price School of Policy Study. We have met with several council people in Redondo Beach. We hope to bring them on board as well. As Sona mentioned, Santa Monica has outreach to us, having heard about this movement and asked if they might be part of it. So happy to answer any questions, if you have any at this time.
So the question I asked earlier, for people that already have solar panels installed, and when the meter's going backwards, meaning they're supplying power to the grid.
Yes.
How would that, if at all, affect their credit?
Right now, as you know, the, the most anybody with solar can do as a resident is zero out their bill. SCE will give you credit. They won't give you a check for that. The credit just rolls over. So what will happen if the bill gets lower at, at the beginning of the program is that that credit will just get a little bigger. But the decision-making process that we now have available to us locally can decide, and has in other areas up north, they can decide to pay residents and businesses a feed-in tariff. And that's a, a fee that's paid when you generate excess energy. You're basically paid as an energy provider, and that's what we want. We want as much of the renewable energy for this program to be generated locally so that local residents of the South Bay get not only the benefit of that renewable energy, but get any remuneration from it. And so along those same lines, right now, Southern California Edison restricts the amount of solar we can put on your house, and I know, because I'm in the process of doing this, and they would like you to have a solar system sized exactly to the amount of energy you use. And they currently do not want you, if you have a roof that's large enough to put on twice as much solar as, as energy you use, Southern California Edison does not want you to do that currently. But in CCA programs, in these community choice programs, the board, which is made up of members of city councils like yourself, typically decide that they would like to have as much renewable energy come from the residents and the businesses on their roofs, and if they have room on ground-mounted systems, on their property. So that's a long answer to your question about solar.
Great. Thanks, Joe.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then I will close. Public input, council. Councilmember Howard.
Yes, a comment, and then I was going to make a motion, but I believe Mr. Galliani mentioned, it was, it was really just March 29th of this year that we first started talking about this. And it's because Mr. Galliani came to us and wanted to do this MB 2025, Sona, Sona, sorry. You guys worked it out together. I know how you guys work. Yeah, okay. Well, Sona's, okay, then Sona, stand up for a second, because I think you're a groundbreaker, and you know it. We just won an award.[1481.25][1481.25](Applause). You know, we just won an award from the chamber, because we all voted, about, you know, the city's environmental programs, and that's, you know, thank you, Sona. So again, March 29th of this year, and now we're talking about entering into a feasibility study for this. And I was so excited. I was there, I was present when I heard Mr. Stillman, and I'd been reading about this before, and I kind of thought it was something that, well, it's just, it's too far off in the future. But there's so, there's so much energy surrounding it, and so many great, committed people in our communities, the South Bay communities, Hermosa Beach, Manhattan Beach, hopefully Redondo, El Segundo, Torrance. My goodness, we're going to lead the way again. We have to do this. We have to support it. I'm going to make a motion to accept it. I see that Councilwoman DeRico wants to speak, though, but I would, I would move, consider adopting this resolution.
I think we need the second before I can.
Seconded by Councilmember Burton.
Thank you. Thank you. So I will be supporting this as well, 1,000%. But I just want to caution us in the following way. So feasibility study is an evaluation and analysis of the potential of a proposed project, which is based on extensive investigation and research, to support the process of decision-making. And the reason I say that is, this is, for me, certainly, a new thing. And I think for most of us, it's a new thing, because it's a new thing for most cities. And so I want to make sure that those from our team, and hopefully the entire team that's part of the feasibility, looks at all the issues. It can be very easy. This is something I think we could all rally behind, and if, probably if we were voting tonight to go forward, we'd be voting in the positive. But because of that, I want to be careful that we don't lose sight of what the potential pitfalls are. I always talk about unintended consequences. And just the example that the mayor brought up about, well, what if, you know, you know, that's one example, and maybe there's a wonderful answer to it, but there's probably a lot more pitfalls. So I just want to be certain that we don't turn this into the community choice aggravation by not looking for those things. But I will be supporting 100%. Thank you.
As I said earlier, I fully support this, and I commend the group for bringing it to our attention. You know, in our work plan or strategic plan, whatever you want to call it, the name seems to change frequently, but one of our objectives is supporting sustainable, clean energy in our environment. And I think we're one of the greenest, sustainable cities around, and I would agree, most of the time, we come first. Hermosa beat us on this one, but it's a good thing, regardless of who came first. I would agree with Councilmember DeRico that we, and I'm usually the one that always talks about unintended consequences, but I know we're in good hands, and it's just a feasibility study at this point. And UCLA and USC are supporting other cities with their research, and of course, to the north, our neighbors to the north, Northern California, are a bit ahead of us. But I know this will be a great thing. It'll add to reducing our carbon footprint, and it will also increase, not increase, result in lower prices. So it's a win-win situation, and I would support it as well. Mayor Pro Tem, Burton.
Yeah, just a quick comment. First, I want to thank the Mayor Pro Tem from Hermosa Beach for appearing, and the members of the South Bay Power, Clean Power Working Group. I would like to set a goal, too. I'd like to do 100% renewable. So if you can factor that in, in accessibility, when we're doing feasibility, I think it's important to set goals. And I just want to ask my fellow councilmembers, is there a need at some point in time to have a subcommittee on this? You know, I think it's always good to have drivers, and I'd be happy to participate in a subcommittee if there's anyone else.
I'd love to, but I don't know what people want to do with that, but.
And I'd be interested as well, but I would like to see where the next stages lead. I think I would like to give staff an opportunity to come back, particularly if there's a possibility of coming back and giving even an update, and then maybe we can decide at that time as a council what the most proactive way is to work this, and whether it's through staff or through council.
We can do that in the future. You're right. And I just want to say, even though there's a motion on that, having solar panels, I would be willing to pay more if it meant that there'd be more renewable energy, you know, all the way around. So I'm one of those people, but.
Great. Okay. So we have a motion to adopt by Councilmember Howard and a second. Great, okay, so we have a motion to adopt by Councilmember Howarth and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Burton, and we will now vote.
Oh, look, and a yes is green.
That's right, there you go.
Honorable mayor votes have been recorded.
And it passes unanimously, congratulations.
Very exciting, thank you so much. Joe, you're such a creative woman.
So, item number 14 is...